July tenth, twenty twenty-three. Sheriff Otter, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, the first order of business is area plan.
Uh, first item would be, we have some ordinance changes. First one would be an ordinance to amend Article Five, Special Use, Section Three, Special Use Designations of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance in effect for Ward County, Indiana. Purpose of this ordinance is to designate an SU thirty-one, an accessory dwelling unit under special use designations. The, uh, area plan commission did recommend a positive, they made a positive recommendation.
We got ordinance last meeting?
No, we've been practices.
I get you.
Mm-hmm. So that would be our first. Or next, it's in your packet as well. Basically, it's a definition for an accessory dwelling unit.
Molly has explained it to me, so I don't have any questions to you.
What specifically makes it a dwelling unit?
Wow. It's an accessory building intended for occupancy by related family members and still allow for related members to reside on the premises, but to prohibit creation of for-profit apartments. Accessory dwelling unit may also be occupied by household employees, caretakers, or caregivers.
Does it have to have, say, for instance, cooking utensils, stove, shower, bathroom?
No, this just allows for a one-bedroom unit in an accessory building. We've had a lot of, like, mother-in-law suites.
Mm-hmm.
Basically what this is. Um, the next...
I understand that, but I'm thinking that it should have some minimum qualifications in order to become a dwelling. I could stick my grand, my mother-in-law out in a shed in my yard, but I don't think, you know, appreciate that too much.
Uh-huh.
You know why?
So we have maximum size limitations, can't get too big.
And does it have to have a restroom?
Does it have to?
No, um, okay.
This allows for a bedroom and a kitchen and an accessory building.
So as it's written, it's basically a place to sleep and they can go back into the normal house and use the bathroom, kitchen, it's just a, as you said, a mother-in-law suite.
I guess if you wanted to, you could, but that's not what we've been seeing. People are asking for a small, like, little spot to put a bedroom, a kitchen, a bathroom, little living room area, and they want it, like, in their backyard.
I'm seeing a lot of those pop up.
Usually they're, like, an elderly parent, or even parents, and they've got kids that don't want to move out yet. They want a place for relatives to stay while they're in town. It's usually what we're seeing.
Molly, I guess I'm confused. You said this requires no restroom or requires a restroom?
We didn't put any regulations on restrooms. But the request has been to have a restroom, just from what we've been hearing from the public.
So on either ordinance, the, the public is asking for more than what it's written for.
My problem is this. There's a place I know of down the road from me. That is a very nice-looking sixteen-by-twenty shift. A couple live in. And it does have a restroom because it hides right over to that, a ditch behind the house.
Hmm.
So that's why I'm asking about some type of regulations on this, because people are going to start putting these little mini bars in their yards and let people live in.
Right, um...
And...
Well, if they're gonna have water in there, we're gonna have to have approval if they're on subject from the health department. Um, the health department stance has been they want them to use the same system, they're not, they don't want another system.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, so we'll, we'll look at things like that, just through the regular permitting process.
And the problem being that people aren't getting permits.
Yeah, right now, they're doing it with nothing.
Mm-hmm.
And Vanderbilt just passed their ordinances on these.
So if they do it the right way and they come to Ward County and, and do all the right things, then you're gonna have those who don't.
You're always gonna have that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I just, what I'm afraid there's, you know, unfortunately, there's people that sometimes aren't as caring as some, or as they should be.
Mm-hmm.
They'll stick an in-law out, or, or they'll stick an older parent out in the mini bar somewhere with no facilities, no air, or something like that, and it's just cruel.
Yeah, Bob, we gotta be careful with that, because we're getting older, so we gotta make sure we're...
Are you worried about your future here?
Um, yeah, I'm just, I'm just running it through my head.
Got a restroom?
Right. I mean, if they're gonna do that, I don't see how we can... How do you stop that if it's already happening?
Well, you would have some type of regulations to states that they're, you know, it's gotta be temperature controlled, it's got to be, you know, have a restroom facilities in it.
Now you're getting into building department regulations, so, so it'd have, it would be subject to the building department rules and regulations, any approvals.
But this is kind of like signing a blank check. Anything goes. I mean, I'm not trying to be hard to get along with, but to me, it's just, it's too wide open. And I, you know...
So Bob, you're wanting to see it more defined?
I would like to see a little bit more definition in it. You know, does it have to be a certain size?
Yes.
It does?
It's the third ordinance tonight.
So there is something that, that lists some things down here with it?
Mm-hmm. One accessory dwelling per parcel must remain accessory to the primary use, not be sold separately, otherwise divided from the primary use. Shall not contain a max, it shall contain a maximum of one bedroom with living floor area no more than forty percent of the floor area of the principal dwelling, or twelve-hundred square feet, whichever is less, shall be restricted to the existing access for the lot from a given street or alley. No additional or multiple driveways will be permitted. And then there are parking requirements, two for the house and one, at least one for the accessory.
Okay, I'm missing something here. How do you feel about it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm missing something. I don't have that.
What do you have?
It's in your box. Do you want me to get it for you?
I'm not getting my box.
It's not gonna be this. No, but this isn't for me. Uh, how we came up with this is I just looked at all the counties around us, and I stole from their ordinances, and we put it all together how we wanted it in the planning commission, so that's what we came up with. Do you want to, you can send it back to the planning commission.
Let's see how the locals feel about it.
Okay.
So we've got the, we've got the space covered, not about access to the property.
We got the space covered as far as a maximum, we don't have the space covered as far as a minimum.
Okay. So you said that basically the, the thoughts and concerns were, you know, not trying to create apartments and generate revenues, this is for family members.
Yeah, we wanted to keep it small and accessory to the main house, we don't want to see two homes on one piece of property.
Covered, covered all the concerns there, but let's cover some concerns, making sure people are taken care of.
I don't know if we can do that. I don't, you know, I think we can minimize it a little bit, but I don't know.
Can you tell me again what it says about, uh, the subject to the building commission's requirements?
Well, any permit we would get would be subject to building commission rules and regulations as far as building code.
So does that mean the building commissioner has to sign up on this before someone's allowed to live there?
They would get their permits from the building commission.
Okay.
Are there currently building commission regulations that address this type of out, uh, outbuilding?
Well, wouldn't be an outbuilding, it'd be like another, a mini house, a small house.
An outbuilding.
accessory.
Would it, would this, would the building code currently exist, cover or something like this, everything in there? Because the, the building, if it's a separate building, I would assume it would, building code would require a bathroom, plumbing, all of those, electric code, stairs, access, steps, I mean, it, it, everything would apply to it, is that, is there anything different that would not apply to it?
Yeah, how, how are these attached? I mean, are they just sitting on the ground, or the, you know, are they foundation? You know?
Do you remember a couple of years ago, we had a, somebody that wanted to, that was building a lake house off, over a property in, by their lake? And we, they had our, they had wanted to build it, and we told them no, because it was going to be, and it, it was, basically, they were building another home because they were wanting to put a stove in a, I think the stove is what did it. If you put a stove in a beach house, it becomes a dwelling.
Right, can't have a full kitchen.
So what are we doing here? It's kind of like the opposite now.
No, you can't have a full kitchen. Okay, we're already permitting accessory dwelling units. Our accessory buildings with just, like, a microwave and a bedroom.
Mm-hmm.
But this would allow for the full kitchen.
Okay.
You don't table it?
Well, I, I think through it, I think that these things have to have some type of, you know... If you, you're gonna allow a full kitchen or cooking facilities inside one of these mini bars, I don't know if they're capable, they're not built for that, one, and two, the building department has to get involved in this, because somebody's gonna die in one of these things if we don't control it.
Mm-hmm.
Basically wants a minimum requirement, the building commission may have those, but we need to investigate that.
Okay, so do you want to send it back to the area plan commission for a further review and get the building department involved?
And get some speci, minimum specifics, you know, what's a...
So that we know what those minimums are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Totally fine, no, that's... Good information, so...
So Molly, is this, so, uh, to Bob's point, so, you know, you, you can go out here and buy a shed for fifteen hundred bucks, two thousand dollars, and sit on the property, or you can go out here and buy a mini home on wheels. Is it, what's, is, is there a difference between those two with, within this? You know, that's, that's really kind of, probably got, you know, wiring standards in it, that's been built to a certain standard.
Right.
Now, now granted, you know, with a eighty, a hundred mile an hour wind comes along, they're probably gonna be rolling across the field or something, but, you know, that, that's, you know, I mean, I guess a homeowner has the responsibility to put those on tie-downs and that kind of thing, but I, I guess that, and maybe that's where Bob's going with this, you know, if somebody's gonna be sleeping in there, there's gotta be some kind of standards and, you know, certain kind of, uh, building minimum.
At minimum, I would want our inspector, or one of our inspectors, to look at it and say, hey, it's safe. It's, it's livable.
Yeah, tiny homes on the trailers do not meet building code, which is why we've, we've looked at those before, and that didn't work. Some, something like a tiny home or a shed from Lowe's would not work for this, because it would not meet building code.
It's working right now in my part of the county. Just let me know.
Did they get their permit?
Don't know.
No?
I think we should table it and send it back for a little bit more overview, a little bit more...
Clarification?
Yeah.
Okay, so go back to the, I'll take it to the August fourteenth area plan commission meeting for all three ordinances? All right.
What did you say, the fourteenth?
Yeah, that's our next APC meeting, so then it'll come back to us August twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
It will be a month later.
A month?
September eleventh. Well, we write up a report, type it up, and give it to you, and give you time. That's how we do it.
Table into September eleventh, is that a motion, sir?
I'll make a motion to, uh, table until...
September eleventh.
September eleventh, to come back in front of us.
Let's just take it, send it back to APC. APC might take another month or two, and then when they're done with it, they'll have a recommendation to bring back.
Okay, well, we'll table indefinitely until Molly brings back...
Send it back to APC.
The revision.
Okay.
Make a motion to...
Just do a motion to send it back to APC, make further review, and we don't need to table it, just, you reject it at this point.
Yes.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Thank you, Molly.
Okay. So our next item would be a request to rezone, PCR twenty-three oh four, petitioner Special Waste Services, Inc., by Joe Beard owner. Owner of the property, J. Rose Properties LLC, by Joe Beard owner. Um, this has been, they are requesting to rezone three point one five acres located on the west side of Prospect Drive, approximately six hundred feet north of the intersection of Van Road, Prospect Drive, from M-two General Industrial to M-three Solid Waste Disposal zoning. This was continued from the June twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three commissioners meeting, and it did receive a positive recommendation from the planning commission.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Matt Hells.
I'm Joe Beard.
All right, guys, I'll start things hot off here. Um, I've personally driven out by the property, uh, you have actually a bigger facility than what I, what I remembered from the past, so it does seem like your business is growing. Um, I, I think, and I'll just speak for myself, I still think I have some concerns, and we've, we've talked to various other industry professionals who do what you are wanting to do in other areas of the country, um, so we've got some feedback, and now Commissioner Saylor's got some notes written down here. I, I think we're making some progress here, maybe toward approval, but there's some things we, we may want to see along the line here. Uh, Commissioner Saylor, you got some notes?
Yeah, to your, your point, Terry, uh, again, I, I've not been on, onsite or didn't, didn't go, you know, door knocking, uh, but I, we, uh, we, we did talk to some folks, and, you know, I, I know I would want to see, uh, you know, if, 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 if this was to be approved, to, to have some right to inspections, you know, I know, I know you're gonna be under, you know, the, the guidelines that EPA and IDM, but, but, you know, locally, you know, we're, we're responsible, responsible for locally, we're responsible for those residents, you know, kind of, uh, you know, not too far off your back door, you know, uh, uh, just to the north, uh, kind of north of you guy, northwest of you a little bit, so, um, you know, and then there's always the transportation, you know, issue that we got going through our county. I know, you know, I've been a commissioner, uh, you know, ongoing for over six years, seven years, and, you know, we've gotten phone calls about leaky loads, and, you know, who do we call, you know, that's always a problem. By the time we get our deputies out there to, you know, and it's just, it's just always a problem, then, you know, who are we gonna have that test, what, what kind of material it is, and that kind of thing, so, uh, there, there's always, you know, there's always those kind of things you gotta worry about, and then, you know, I, I guess I'm still not real clear on, on really the, the containment, you know, and, and, you know, if, if this was happening indoors or outdoors. I know you talked about car washes, and I know you talked about grease traps, you know, car washes, I don't think, you know, you know, I don't think we're getting a whole bunch of, you know, nasty stuff off cars, you know, but, you know, the grease traps, I know from those are gonna be horrific odors, you know, and that kind of thing, so, um, and, and they'll, you know, they'll tell them what, what else is, you know, in those, but, you know, that's, you know, i- if the winds, and I know prevailing winds typically don't come out of the south, southeast, but, um, you, you know, the prevailing winds sometimes can, can have effect on neighborhoods, and what, you know, we got a park out there that's not too far away, and we're just, you're, unfortunately, that's right in the middle of a residential areas all, all the way around it, which, you know, is, is not probably the best, you know, best place to sit right now, and I know, I know the industrial park was there first, and, you know, the, you know, the, the homes pop up around it, but...
Sure, if I ask a question specific to that real quick?
Go ahead.
Yep, so, um, I've learned that there are, um, ways to control that odor, is, is that part of the plan?
Oh, yeah, uh, lime treatment is the easiest way to, uh, I mean, when, when we're dumping trucks now, transferring trucks now, you get that odor. Uh, but in order to process material, in order to separate solid from the water, we'll be using, uh, rotary hydrated lime and, uh, and it's, uh, soda monoxide. And then this is just a pH control, they use these things about the treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant.
And then I know you already told me, I apologize for asking again, what is the duration that this stuff may sit, max?
The, well, if we get the permit in order to process, um, it'd be, I want to set up the system to run the material, um, twenty, forty thousand gallons a day, and then it gets put into solids, gets put into a roll-off, and then, uh, haul it off to the, uh, landfill or a, uh, possible, beneficial reuse...
Yeah.
Of that material.
So, so it sounds like your plan is not to let it set any more than a day?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, I think we're controlling on seventy-two hours now, I think that, that I do.
I would have to look in the permit to see, I mean, we can't run right now, so that's not in the forefront of our minds. Right now, we have to bring it back to the facility and bulk it, and then transport it out. So the only difference would be we're not transporting out liquid, we'd be transporting out solid.
Solid. And what do you use to dewater that? Is that like a, is that like a sawdust, or?
Um, for the grease...
For solidification.
Yeah, for solidification, like, the, that would be, sawdust would be what we use for, like, the grit pit waste for car washes. The grease, uh, is used diametrous earth, is what we use as a filter cake on the machine, and then it just, uh, grease gets sucked in through that, or the water gets sucked in through the diametrous earth, and the grease is shaved off that and on a conveyor and into a roll-off. And that's all indoors, the, the grease is handled indoors, yes.
That system's been in use up until thirteen or fourteen, uh, from nineteen, nineteen-nine. And then when I bought the business from that, well, at thirteen, uh, they started opening up to take the grease trap waste locally, and then we started trucking the stuff that they wouldn't take locally to, uh, Nashville and Louisville and Paducah. And, um, now, now we're to a point, we have the volume to be able to run the machine and be, uh, and benefit, financial benefits.
Sorry to interrupt you there.
No, no, you're good, um... So that, so your, all your containment stuff is, your, that your, your process is taking place indoors?
Right.
Okay, then your containment, your containment apparatuses, that's all, that's all in, in movable boxes or containers, correct?
Only one. The, the one out front still holds grease, but there are tanks in the building that the product is, is transferred to, filtered through, and then ran on the machine.
Okay.
I think there's fifteen thousand, what now, more than that of the system it works through before it gets to the...
Fifteen thousand gallons of, of raw material is our current, or current storage, uh, of the process, and then it goes through the machine, and then, uh, it gets tanked, and then that water can be hauled off, like I said, and they, I've got some tests with it, but it, we, we're not running, we're not running to, we're not running it at, at all for a long time. We're just bringing it in, blowing, unloading the truck, and what, what doesn't go to Evansville and now Owensboro, um, we're putting in frac tanks, both in, taking six thousand gallons to either Louisville or Paducah. And it's, it's, it's getting to be a...
When, Joe, why do you, Louisville or Paducah, why, why do you have to take this stuff that far away? What, what are you, I mean, you can't dump that locally here? Why?
Politics.
Politics?
What boils down to?
Newburgh, the Newburgh treatment plant won't take it, with the Chandler plant won't take grease. The only plants that'll take grease wastewater treatment plants are Evansville and Owensboro locally.
Okay, so how come you're not trucking it there? Where are you going?
They can only take so much, and Vanderbilt County will only take Vanderbilt County waste, and that's what we do with all Vanderbilt counties, but all Ward counties, uh, and the other surrounding counties that we, we pick up grease from, either, like I said, Louisville, Paducah, Nashville.
Owensboro only takes, uh, four thousand gallons at a time every six hours from us, so we're able to, uh, a maximum of eight thousand gallons a day, and we're pumping twenty to forty thousand gallons a day. It's like I said, it's just, it's becoming a tra, a transportation nightmare. And we just, and we've had this...
Is that because, guys, help me, I'm, I'm ignorant on this, is that, trying to understand, is that because it's a liquid, or is that, is that because, i- is that liquid or solid?
Liquid, liquid, yeah, we're, we're hauling in liquid ones.
So, so if you're hauling in solid, that changes, that changes the game?
Oh, in ninety, ninety-three, ninety, about ninety, ninety to ninety-three percent of the material is water, the rest is solids.
Okay.
I mean, it'll take, uh, you know, twenty thousand gallons, we might get six thousand, well, probably, let's just say ten, twelve tons of solids out of that.
I'm just thinking, if you're using something to absorb the liquid, you still, you still got the weight.
If you're solidified, yeah, you're, you're adding, you're adding, uh, you're absorbing the water, you're having to haul, you're absorbing, you're hauling off solidified water.
Right.
But that's, that's another process, and when it comes to these car wash pits, I mean, that's just, there's so much sand and rock and stuff like that that gets washed off your car, believe it or not.
Exactly.
That's, if we put it in our tanks, it's just gonna lock up the bottom of the tank and, and unless you keep it highly suspended, and that's a lot of wear and tear on embellors and, and pumps, and so it's just, uh, you put it in a, a dewatering box and, uh, let it settle out, suck, suck the water off the top of it, solidify the sludge in order to go to landfill. But it's, it's handling and changing the process, and we want to do what's right by IDM, we want to do what's right by the environment and, and, uh, you know, make a dollar at the same time.
Yeah, that's two different, the, the grit pit waste is completely separate from the grease, the grease is handled through the dewatering machine. The grit pit is just throw, throw sawdust on it, mix it up, so it passes like a paint filter, that we can get it into a, a landfill. So it's two completely different processes that we're doing there.
I think the last car wash we done, we charged the, we added the, the dumping fee up at the last... landfill was about six grand, that's your local car wash.
Wow.
And it don't need to be that high.
Got a question, counsel for you. You know, before we allow this, there's, again, some things that I think we want to see using the right to inspect as an example. From a process and procedure standpoint, what do we need to put in place so that we get to the point where we're able to let these guys do what they want to do?
One of APC's stipulations as to the permit, right? As to the rezoning request, right?
I'm sorry, what was that?
A right to inspect the property, that would be something APC would have to add into its rezoning, correct?
No.
In order to, one of its special use requirements for this project, if it is rezoned?
No, it wouldn't come from the APC.
Who would it come from?
To inspect the property, the right to inspect the property, well, the Commissioners could put that on there, right?
On what?
Put it on what?
On the rezoning?
We don't have anything to do with rezoning, it's you.
You're, you have the final authority on zoning. We just make a recommendation, and we can't say that the Area Plan Commission would go onto the property?
No.
No.
We could have independent inspector or somebody such as our building inspector or.
You're very experienced.
Can we stack on top of what APC or zoning has already handed us?
Area Plan Commission can't do it.
We can.
Commissioners can't.
We can make it.
The Commissioner's job is just to approve.
It'll be on the.
Not.
In the minute.
Makes sense.
And then they're going to have petition.
Right.
Yes.
The state already has authority to inspect our facility at any time.
Right, because your permit, you go.
Right.
Is that EPA and IDAM?
That is, EPA and IDAM both can come on our property at any time and go through basically anything they want.
I think the problem with that is, that's not, that's not whose phone rings.
That's not what?
That's not who gets called.
Oh.
That's us.
Right, right, but, I mean, that can be referred on to.
Yeah.
A state inspector, and a state inspector will, will come, they've got an office in Petersburg that their solid waste inspector or emergency responder.
Was that one of them? That's your entire whole system without him.
Oh, Driscoll case, or nephew.
They've got, they've got a guy that's a little weird.
That satisfies that requirement.
And he's.
But they're, yeah, they're required to.
Authority conditions, they would speak that into the motion, correct? And then it's in the minutes made part of the record that way? Any conditions that you could put on there?
I don't know how that gets tracked and enforced then, if it's just sitting in the minutes somewhere, it seems to me, so you got a request to rezone.
Mm-hmm.
And then they have an application with IDAM with approvals, but they still have to then come to area plan with their, you've allowed them in this zoning request to do certain things, right?
Yes.
And so don't you also place restrictions as to what they can do with that zoning?
Well, they could only do what they've applied for.
Have a special use permit, right?
They're limited to the M. three. For dewatering, grease septic, and solidification, that's all they can do. And the minutes we use as official record, we print those and keep them with the file.
This ordinance includes stipulations, there's a separate ordinance number, I've never seen the actual ordinance, so I see the number, so we could add to the ordinance if you want to have additional restrictions to or qualifications that they have to meet in order to meet the zoning, it could just be added to this ordinance.
Okay. Guys, I think there's maybe a couple others, don't know that we need to talk about it, but, you know, just the ability to go inspect if we need to upon a complaint is an example.
I thought you already could, actually.
We could work on that, put something together, try to buy them and make sure they're, whatever stipulations you wanted to add to it.
I think we need to have a county attorney conference with zoning and APC attorney.
Put together.
Iron out.
Put together something.
We can, that's fine, but we are on a limited amount of time, something, a motion to accept or reject has to be made by July twenty-fourth, and if it does not receive that, it's automatically approved.
Twenty-fourth is our next meeting.
That is, yeah, that's the next meeting.
Yep.
So say that one more time.
You have two weeks till July twenty-fourth to recommend, to say approve or to deny, and if it is not done, it automatically is approved.
Okay. Well, I don't know, I mean, there's so much going on in Ward County, I don't know that you guys have time to iron all that out in two weeks, do you?
We could add it into the ordinance, if you know what you want, what you want to add to it, we could do it, yeah.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out if we, if we have time, that's fine, but if we don't.
Yeah, I think we do.
Okay.
Yep.
You going to reach out to attorney to all, or you want me to do it?
We'll reach out to Maury, yeah.
Okay.
So we need to just make a motion to table this to the twenty-fourth then?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, is that what you need? Motion to table till July twenty-fourth?
Second.
Over first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Hopefully we got it done in.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more item for tonight, state construction plans, PP twenty-three oh eight, North Wark Industrial Park, Section Five, it is owned and being petitioned by Wark County Redevelopment Commission by Steve Rowley, the executive director, Industrial Park Holdings LLC, by Eric Reford, or Refit, sorry, member, approximately one hundred and seventy-seven point five six acres, located on the north side of Industrial Park Drive, one thousand three hundred and twenty feet east of the intersection of Industrial Park Drive and State Route fifty-seven in Greer Township, seven and eighteen four nine, advertised in the standard June twenty-ninth of twenty-three. The street plans were previously approved on this with the original primary on June thirteenth of two thousand and seven, and the county engineer has signed off on their request.
Good afternoon, Jeremy Elrod with Morley, project engineer. So just a little bit in addition to what Molly had said, so, yeah, we're here to request effectively a, I don't want to call it a no road improvement, but a delayed road improvement. We're asking, do you need an additional, it's the same one I passed out of Drainage Board, so Lot Four, the lot in the back, its driveway have come out, we need thirty feet of extra road, we're just asking that that requirement not be part of the plating process, that it be required for the development of Lot Four, and then Lot Four would not be able to attain their certificate of occupancy until that road's constructed.
Mr. Sherwood, any comments?
Bobby's already signed off to that effect, that the thirty feet can be constructed at that time.
And Lot Four currently has an upfrontage, it's not required as part of the subdivision.
Good with that? I make a motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, next order of business is the action agenda and the approval of minutes from the June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three regular session.
Make a motion to approve the June twenty-six regular session minutes?
Second?
Over first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, Ms. President. Consent agenda tonight, we have the county auditor claims voucher, report date seven five, twenty twenty-three, the payroll voucher, report date of six thirty, twenty twenty-three, the Keller Schrader Nutanix server replacement quotes, and the clerk's monthly report for May twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Over first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. And the next order of business is our county attorney.
Nothing today, Mr. President?
Thank you. Next order of business is our county engineer, highway superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Bobby Howard, who's on vacation this week, I present the Wark County Bridge two hundred, six F conversion commitment agreement. Essentially, this agreement is necessary to allow for NDOT and federal highway to complete the National Environmental Policy Act document for the bridge project to be able to appraise the right of way within the six F property required for the project to complete the six F conversion process. Essentially, Bridge two hundreds on Little Pigeon Creek, which borders Spencer County, this is to keep the bridge in its current location, minimizing the right of way impact and the need to acquire any additional amount of right of way, which is surrounded totally by wetlands, and minimize our wetland mitigation with DNR. This process is part of the federal aid paperwork that has to be signed, the board will approve it, I'll give your signatures after you meet. Project cannot move forward without this.
Make a motion to approve?
Second?
Over first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you. Next item I have is the same bridge number two hundred, right of way services agreement. County engineer Bobby Howard said the board previously approved Lockmueller Group as part of the design process to be the right of way engineer for the project as well as the design engineer. This contract will allow Lockmueller Group to move forward with right of way design and purchasing when we get to that point. It's just a standard contract, I believe the attorney has reviewed it, there is their standard fees, but we do not know what the right of way is going to cost yet because it hasn't been designed.
So, make a motion to approve the services agreement?
Second?
We have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you. Last item I have is just a report to the board, that Peabody Coal has violated their Seven Hills Road, Road Use Agreement process, they were caught hauling overweight vehicles down the public roadway in Bridge forty-three and forty-four, there was an email sent to accordingly to that effect, they had promised to cooperate fully and pay for any damages that they may have caused.
Thank you.
That's all that I have, thank you.
Anyone else have any business for the board?
Thanks, Steve.
Make a motion to refuse?
Second?
Over first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.